Good evening, welcome to the joint meeting of the Abington School Committee and the Abington Board of Selectmen. Would you please stand and join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the public announcements, I have one public announcement. The town manager would like the residents to know that you are invited to join the Old Colony Planning Council in the town of Abington as we conduct a road safety audit at the intersection of Hancock and Chestnut Street. The board's safety audit will commence at the Abington Police Station located at 215 Central Street in Abington at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, December 10th. That's 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, December 10th, 2013, and will include a site visit to this intersection. So if any of the residents, and I'm sure there are people, this has been a problem to our town for some time, they're more than welcome to show up at the police station and they will provide you with the agenda and very informative. The Old Colony Planning Council has already forwarded us some information on the amount of speeds, the amount of vehicles that go through that intersection, and the number of crashes that have occurred there. So if you have an interest, again, it's 10 o'clock at the police station on December 10th. Does any other members have any announcements, school committee members? Okay, at this time, I'd like to move forward and ask Rich Testa, the chairman of the Abington School Building Committee, to come forward. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for, again, for having us this evening. As you may remember, at the conclusion of step one of the feasibility study, we came forward to the Board of Selectmen as well as the school committee and asked for you to take action and vote on a submission to the MSBA. That submission included three potential solutions to the town's school building needs, and those three solutions that we submitted to the MSBA were the construction of a new middle school, the construction of a brand-new co-located middle high school, and the addition renovation of the existing high school to convert it to a co-located middle high school. When we submitted those to the MSBA, the MSBA approved us to continue the analysis of two of those three solutions. They did request that we no longer study a new middle school as they did not feel that it was a viable solution to the town's current and future school building needs. As a result of that, our architect Scott Dunlap is going to present to you this evening two solutions, a new co-located middle high school and an ad-reno middle high school. We also, at the suggestion of the MSBA, looked at several different options of an ad-reno, including an addition of a new middle to the high school, an addition of a new high school, converting the existing high school to a middle, and Scott will review both of those options with you as well. As a reminder, the goal of the Abington School Building Committee is to determine the most educationally appropriate and fiscally responsible solution to the town's current and future school building needs. And I think once you see Scott's presentation tonight, you'll see that there is only one clear solution in the school building committee's mind that accomplishes both of those goals. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott for the presentation, and then we'll come back for question and answers if there are any at the end of that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Testa, and thank you to the Board of Selectmen and the school committee for the opportunity to present an update to our work tonight. Many, most of you, it's actually quite a credit to this town, it's surprising to see so many of the public officials so actively involved in our building committee meeting. So I know that all of you have seen the detailed presentation that we have given on a couple of occasions and have been through that. Tonight, we're going to give a little bit of a consolidated review of the work that's been done as part of step two, so that Board of Selectmen and school committee can make a decision regarding the submittal of all of this information to the MSBA. As Chairman Testa mentioned, the last time we were before you, we were reviewing all of the step one material that we were presenting to MSBA. We've spent the last several months looking at all of that material in more detail in what we have always called step two. And just as Chairman Testa mentioned, we have taken a look at essentially four potential solutions for solving the educational and facility needs in the town of Abington. The first of which is a co-located middle high school, all-new building at the high school, and then three options for renovation and expansion for a co-located school. At the end of this step and the work that we've done over the last several months, the MSBA wants us to submit all of that detailed review and analysis to them, and they'll be wanting to collaborate with the town of Abington to decide what the best option for moving on to step three would be. Now, they also want the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to make a decision with regard to which option they think is the best to move forward with, and the building committee has spent a significant amount of time reviewing the work of step two and will be prepared to make a recommendation on what they voted to approve to proceed with for step three, and we'll be talking about that at the completion of our presentation. The objective of all of this is to approximately a week from today, submit all of this information to MSBA along with the town's preference on how to proceed. And so tonight, I'm going to go through those. We can certainly ask some questions at the end. If you feel like there's a piece of this presentation that you would like us to expand on more, we will do so. The existing high school site that I think everybody recognizes, the existing high school building is located here, front entry area into the existing high school building here, parking area here, the fields in the rear, Riley Field, just for orientation, off to your left over here, and then the building we're in tonight, Town Hall right here, the library right here. So as we're looking at some of these options, you'll see they're all developed in some form or fashion on this existing piece of property as either new construction or renovation expansion of the existing high school building. The very first option, which we call option one, is a full new construction option, meaning under this scenario, a new co-located five-to-12 and pre-K school would be constructed on the existing site while the existing building remained occupied and operational. And then ultimately, the site would be, the existing building would be demolished and the area where the existing building is located would be converted to fields and parking so that the entire site area supported a new co-located middle high school, all-new field amenities, and all the appropriate parking. Now, we also have, this building, I should say, the building that you see a footprint of right here, takes on a fairly linear configuration, and we've got a floor plan that matches up to this building footprint by design and meets the current educational program established by the building committee, staff, and administration. As we've been talking about this option one, we've had a lot of good input on site issues, field issues, things to address related to playfields and parking and drives and sports events, and then inside the building, really good feedback with regard to the separation of middle school and high school students and entry points and all those kinds of things. Those are all very important things, but it's also important to note that at this point in time, we're really just testing the scenario of a new construction option, and should the town elect to proceed with, for example, option one or any of the other options, in the next phase, we'll be spending six or seven months really honing in on the design of the building and the design of the site. The point of step two is to analyze it in enough detail that we know the cost of these various options in significantly more detail than we did in step one, but not necessarily to design a finished building or a finished site. The building that we do, that this site does represent, is this floor plan, which all of you probably have seen in the information distributed, but it essentially involves co-locating the middle school and the high school with separate entries for those populations, a separate entry for pre-kindergarten, but we, in an organization of the various educational spaces to support the kind of learning environment that came out of all of the educational visioning session and all the educational programming sessions that were done in step one. However, we're not going to spend a lot of time on the detail of this floor plan and layout tonight because, again, if we do move to the next stage and next step with, for example, option one, there'll be a lot of time invested in taking a look at all those decisions and continuing to design and develop this particular version. So we have, we've sort of gone through the details of it with the building committee to confirm that it does meet the educational program without being too married to the specific layout because we know that more design time would be spent on that in the next step. This is a second-floor layout for that option-one scenario and a third-floor layout for that option-one scenario. The second option, which we call 2A, is one of the renovation and expansion options for a co-located middle school and high school. But on this site plan, you can see dotted in black the existing high school right here. And we call this particular option the middle school new addition, high school new addition, because essentially, in this particular approach, and this is one of the options that MSBA specifically asks us to explore as your partner in this collaboration, they will be providing approximately half of the funding, so they'll have, had a lot of input and will continue to have a lot of input. They wanted us to explore the possibility of leaving this piece of the existing high school and leaving this piece of the existing high school and essentially constructing a new high school in this area connecting the two buildings and a new middle school in this area connecting the two buildings. And so option 2A is all structured around what would happen and what the impact would be if a new high school building was constructed between this existing gymnasium piece and this existing cafeteria piece and then a new middle school constructed here. Now, there are a lot of phasing implications of that. The new middle school would have to be constructed first in this area, and then the existing high school would have to be demolished and constructed in this area, and those are some of the more detailed discussions we had with the building committee, but that is the, essentially, the approach included in option 2A. These are floor plans associated with 2A. They happen to show dotted in red the existing high school gymnasium and the existing high school dining and cafeteria and kitchen area that would remain in place as part of this approach, and then the demolished existing high school building in between, and they start to show the detail of the spaces that would have to be inserted in order to create a new high school and a new middle school in this 2A option. The second-floor plans of that particular scenario and a third-floor plan of that particular The second renovation and expansion option that we considered was 2B, and it essentially involves, as you can see up here, middle school new addition, high school renovation. So in this particular scenario, the objective was to do a new middle school at the rear of the existing high school and connect it to the existing high school building, renovate, leave the existing high school as dotted in the black outline, and renovate that existing high school and expand it to meet the new high school program such that when it's complete, middle school, high school would coexist in that location with the existing high school shell having been utilized in its entirety. Significant amount of demolition associated with configuring the spaces appropriately inside the high school building, but it would remain in place as part of that renovation. Again, with this kind of scenario, the middle school piece gets constructed first, high school students would have to move into that middle school piece or some other space for a period of time in order to allow the existing high school to be renovated because we're talking about a significant magnitude of renovations, as we reported earlier in our step-one discussion. And so the impact of any of these renovation addition options, I should point out, is probably a total duration of around 42 months for construction versus the new construction option, option one, being 30 to 36 months. We're going to talk about that a little bit in our summary at the end, but all of these renovation and expansion options involve a significantly longer construction duration. This is the floor plan for option 2B that shows a red dotted line around the existing high school building because we're leaving that building in place, but you can see some expansion occurring here, some expansion occurring here, some expansion occurring here in order to meet the required educational program, and then you can see the piece representing the new middle school located right here. Trying to achieve, and all of these options tried to achieve all the primary goals of separating the school populations, creating the newly required educational program space, space to meet the educational program, et cetera. We have a second-floor plan for that scenario and a third-floor plan for that scenario as well. The, then the third renovation addition option known as 2C involves a slightly different approach in renovating and expanding the high school and came out of the complications associated with trying to move the existing high school students into a newly constructed middle school. As you may recall, in the two other renovation addition options, 2A and 2B, the middle school was constructed first, and then the high school students would have to move out of the high school to allow it to be renovated. In this scenario, option 2C, the high school building is constructed first, and the high school is located in the rear of the building, all in an effort to allow the high school students to move into it once it's complete, allow the existing high school to be vacated and converted through renovation and expansion to a middle school that would have all the appropriate program spaces. So you can see the additions to that building starting to occur in this scenario as well in order to provide the necessary space to promote a middle school and the established middle school educational program. This is the floor plan that goes with that option 2C. You can see in this area, at the top of the slide, all of the new construction here is the new high school building, and then you can see the existing high school building in the red outline and footprint, and a significant amount of renovation is occurring in order to allow these newly created spaces to be the correct size, correct adjacencies, and meet the new educational program for the middle school. You can see the additions of the auditorium, you can see the dining area expanded, all in an effort to meet the total required space for the program. A second-floor plan for that same option, 2C, and then the third-floor plan for option Now, one of the things that we're required to do in step two is take a much more detailed look at the cost of the various options because ultimately, the MSBA is going to be weighing the cost of any option very heavily, and they are assuming that the town would be doing so also. So one of the things that will be in the submittal to MSBA is a very detailed cost estimate. Unlike, as you may recall, in step one, we essentially knew the size of the buildings being proposed, and therefore, using an approximate dollar per square foot cost, we generated the cost to construct each of those buildings. And that was back when we had, I believe it was 16 total options that we were looking at, and before we narrowed those down and moved into step two. Now that we're in step two, the MSBA requires us to hire an independent cost estimator that specializes in public school construction costs. And we sat down with them and went through all of these four options, option one, 2A, 2B, and 2C, and we have to talk about everything from exactly how the project will be phased to what the potential construction materials and systems would be, mechanical systems, electrical systems, et cetera. And there will be a cost estimate, which was prepared by them, PM&amp;C is the name of the professional cost estimator that did the work, that's just over 100 pages, that details all of the construction costs for the building and site that would go into each of these various options, taking into account the timeframe duration, the impact of phasing the projects to move students from one location to the next, and all of the things that would impact the costs associated with the project. And then we're required to take that construction cost and plug it into a very similar format that you saw after step one in order to generate a proposed total project cost for each of the options. And I'll go back and talk about a little bit the detail that goes into our summary here, but I just want to first point out that the total of each of these options is included on this line right here. So you can see the total for option one, the new construction, the all-new construction option being 96.4 million. You can see the total for the option 2A being 104.4 million, the total for option 2B being 103.4 million, and then the total for option 2C being 103.2 million. So one of the reasons I jumped to that is because one of the things that surprised us is, you may recall, in step one, using some basic dollar per square foot cost, we had projected that all of the options were fairly close together in terms of their costs, but that the, and for all practical purposes, even the new construction renovation addition options were very close together, and we said the differential might even be negligible in that there could be a variable of 1% or so in that early kind of estimating. But here, clearly, the new construction option has distinguished itself separately from the three renovation addition options as having some costs that are significantly less than the renovation addition option. We're going to talk about what those are in just a minute and the reason why the costs were lower in just a minute, but I want to go through the line items. I know we've talked about the things that make up a total project budget, but I just want to talk about that and review it a little bit tonight. We have associated with the total project budget, the fees associated with project management and oversight. We have the fees associated with the design, engineering, permitting, testing, and various other expenses associated with the design of the building and engineering the building. There's a category called miscellaneous project cost that will include some legal fees, things like surveying the site, geotechnical inspections and investigations on the site. We will, we will have, as we move into the next step, and I said this when we're talking through step one, we will have a detail, in step three, we'll have to prepare a detailed breakdown of each of these categories. So we'll start to break these numbers down. They are backed up by, each of them are backed up by detailed numbers now, but we'll start to show those as part of the submittal to MSBA in step three, so you will see a lot more expansion of these numbers. You'll see in here, as you did in step one, owner's contingency, construction contingency, all of those same categories that were included as part of the step-one total project budget, but the one that has gotten much more refined in this particular step-two analysis, again, is the construction, the big number, the construction costs associated with the project. We, again, are projecting at the very bottom the cost of the town of Abington based on the MSBA's participation and reimbursement, and so you can see the variable there. And the reason there is a spread between the upper, the lower number and the upper number on what the potential cost of the town of Abington is, just as a reminder, is the lower number represents the absolute minimum amount of participation for MSBA and then are the, just the opposite, the lower number represents MSBA's maximum participation, the higher number represents MSBA having a variable of a couple of percent in terms of their participation based on how many reimbursement points the project ultimately qualifies for. We'll be pursuing as much grant reimbursement as possible from the MSBA. Some of it is contingent on their decision with regard to how green the building is, which we're going to pursue ultimate reimbursement points of two reimbursement points for, and the other category is maintenance and operations. They took, take a look at the past history of the maintenance and operation of the school facilities in the town of Abington and award up to two points for that. We believe Abington will do extremely well qualifying for those. So we have no reason to believe that Abington won't qualify for the maximum available reimbursement, but we, just to be safe, we are showing a variation in the potential cost of the town There was quite a bit of discussion when the, when this information was presented to the building committee with regard to the advantages of the new construction option. Obviously, it's less costly now that we have the more detailed analysis of the construction costs. It's a shorter timeframe in terms of the time required to complete the project. As I said earlier, we're projecting that it's probably 30 to 36 months, whereas the renovation addition options are probably in the 42 to 48-month timeframe. The new construction option is less disruptive to students and staff because it would essentially be constructed around the existing building without the need for students to move out of that building, and then when the new construction is completed, they could move directly from the existing building into their new building. It's a single move without the need to move students on multiple occasions like we would have to do in the renovation addition options. It ultimately produces a more efficient building layout. It will have less building envelope, if you will, meaning less exterior wall, less roof area. The MSBA is very keen on this because they know that the more efficient a building is in terms of its layout and its wall and roof area, the more efficient it will be to operate in the future, and they're looking out for kind of the long-term interests of the town on operational costs as well as first costs on building construction. It has no, the new building option, option one, has no internal courtyard. You may have noticed on all three of the renovation and addition options, in order to get daylight into all the classrooms and keep the building in a relatively compact footprint, we had to create an internal courtyard. Middle school and high school do not have to share a cafeteria space. We didn't talk a lot about the details of the floor plans, but one of the disadvantages in all of those renovation addition options is if we want to keep that existing dining and cafeteria space, which was one of the efficiencies of renovating, expanding, and trying to keep some of the existing buildings so you don't have to build that space again, it would have to be shared by both the middle school and the high school. Now, in any of those options, you could certainly build one for the middle school and build one for the high school, but then you defeat kind of the efficiency of trying to reuse the existing cafeteria and kitchen. In the new option, option one, and kitchen. In the new option, Option 1, we have middle school and high school with the ability to separate their dining areas. The Option 1 had a more economical, long-term, long-term operational cost, because, again, just like I said when I was talking about building envelope and building efficiency, it has a more compact layout, the distribution of the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems will be more compact, shorter runs, less energy use, et cetera, better educational layout for the building. Clearly, in an Option 1 scenario, having the benefit of being able to organize the building without any preconceived notion, or without any of the disadvantages of trying to work within the existing confines of the current layout of the building, will allow for a better and more efficient educational layout for the Option 1 scenario. Better organization for co-location of middle school and high school. Again, the opportunity to start from scratch in laying out the middle school space and the high school space, without having to work around the existing building layout, will allow us to control the separation and the co-location component for any proposed new building. And then, there was a lot of discussion about renovation addition and the unknowns associated with it. Anytime you renovate and expand an existing building, you don't know exactly what you're getting into. When you start to demolish walls and uncover plumbing or unforeseen conditions, hazardous materials that are not identifiable until that demolition begins, even the MSBA will advise that in any of those renovation addition scenarios, that we carry a larger contingency for those unknowns, and that is reflected in the cost that we have projected in the total project budgets. So, there's a lot of discussion around all of those items, and how even outside of the first one, the cost impact, there's certainly some advantages to the new construction option. There was also quite a bit of discussion with the Building Committee on why renovation expansion of the high school is more expensive than building a new school. It seems somewhat counterintuitive, because it would seem like there would be some inherent savings associated with renovating and expanding and utilizing some of the new building. So I've just highlighted some of those here. Construction time period, time is money, particularly when you consider that labor will make up more than half of the construction costs on any of these projects. So the longer construction time period and duration makes the renovation addition options expensive. The age of the building systems, even though the building itself is in very good condition and has been maintained extremely well, all of those building systems, the plumbing, piping, ventilation, and electrical equipment, have all, through good maintenance, exceeded, significantly exceeded their life expectancy. So the renovation of that building would require that all of those components be replaced. Structural code compliance, as a result of the work required there for renovation, the existing building must be brought up to meet current structural codes. Same thing with building code compliance and life safety. In this kind of renovation, all of the existing buildings must be modified to meet current building codes and life safety requirements. And what does that mean? You know, every hallway, every corridor, every stairwell opening has to meet the new requirements for the building to be, for student-staff to be able to exit the building safely, and those requirements have changed since the original building was constructed. Handicap accessibility is a big one that we've talked about on a number of occasions. Existing building has to be 100% handicap accessible as a result of the renovation. And this means that every door opening, again, every hallway, every counter height, every stair, every change in building elevation, you can't, if a building is existing and you're not renovating it, you can add a chair lift, you can add a ramp that's not fully compliant for a new building, but is fine for an existing building. Once you renovate the building and invest the kind of money that we're talking about here, the entire building has to be 100% handicap accessible. So that means that all of those building entrances have to have elevators, ramping systems that are fully compliant, that take up a lot of area, because as a reminder, the first floor, main floor of the high school building is about half a level above the outside grade or elevation. So, at all of those entries, we've got to either do a compliant ramp, combined with an elevator, or some kind of complicated addition or modification to the building to make all those accessible. We have to deal with all the elevation changes. There are three different floor levels in the building, meaning that it doesn't line up from the gymnasium side to the cafeteria side. Those are at significantly different elevations, is about seven to eight feet of difference, and then the building in the middle is at a completely different elevation, too. So, you can see in the floor plan, we have allowed for areas to insert ramps and elevators to make up for that, but it's one of the things that makes the renovation addition options very expensive. Asbestos and hazardous materials compliance, as part of the renovation, all of the existing asbestos, lead paint, and other hazardous materials have to be fully abated and removed, a big expense that's obviously driving the cost of that. Building efficiency, an all-new building would be smaller, quite frankly, than the renovation addition options. In all of the scenarios that we have looked at, a new building can be smaller and more compact, less square footage. Energy code compliance, the existing building is clearly less efficient in terms of its building envelope, systems, lighting, et cetera, and although a lot of those are going to be replaced, that does trigger a significant cost to meet the new energy code requirements. And then, as I mentioned earlier, all of the unknowns associated with renovation drive the contingency that's carried in the renovation addition options to be more costly than the new construction option. So, that's a really, really quick summary of a lot of the conversations that we have with the Building Committee about the reasons for that, and just gives you a little bit of a snapshot of why that takes I know that's quick, it's a lot of information. You'll all be getting the complete submittal binder that includes the detailed cost estimates and our summary of this information, as well as the detailed backup to all of this information. And I'd be happy to cover any particular topics in more detail, or answer any questions. I know the Chairman Testa is here, along with Superintendent Schaefer, to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Scott. Questions?
Scott, I've got five, I'm going to ask two. You mentioned you use PMC for cost estimates for this particular phase?
Yes.
When you get to Phase 3, I've been led to believe that there's two estimates that are done, the owner's, project manager does one, and then you go out to an independent source to get another cost estimate, and then you verify, to make sure, to basically verify the accuracy of the estimate for your project.
That's exactly right. At the end of Step 3, just as you described, we will, again, employ the services of PMNC as an independent cost estimator to do another detailed round of cost estimating. But just as you described, in addition to that, the owner's project manager, KBA, will go out and also hire an independent professional cost estimator who specializes in public school construction, and they will do an estimate, completely independent, of PMNC. And then, subsequent to those two estimates being completed, all of us, the owner's project manager, us as the designer, then the two cost estimating firms have to get together to collaborate on making certain that we all can agree on what the cost is. So, the MSBA has gone to great lengths to make certain that by the time you get through all of these three steps, you can rely on the validity of the cost estimates that have been generated. And they do that, because it's at the end of Step 3, when they establish, essentially, the final contract for how they're going to fund the project, and they want to make certain that all of the potential costs are included in that, and that they're accurate. But yes, you're exactly right.
The second question is more involved with enrollment, and I noticed that we're projecting this project on 1,115 pupils over eight grades, 5 through 12, which strike me as 140 per grade. It strikes me as somewhat low, maybe not at the high school, but at the 5 through 8. And I guess my question is, is there any room for growth if, I don't know, the population expands, people who might be looking at alternative education choices now with a new school in town, they decide to come to public school, you know, what do we do there, or what are our options?
Sure. One of the, one of the things the MSBA will require us to do in Step 3, regardless of which option the town chooses, and which direction the town chooses, in Step 3, when that option is further developed with more detailed floor plans and a more detailed site plan, they'll require us to demonstrate that that option is easily expandable, just in case something happens in the future, and in your enrollment does change, and you need to add more classrooms or add more space. And it's, it sounds like common sense, but it's something they really focus on when they look at what is being designed for the town and by the town in the next step. They'll make certain that it's easily expanded for that reason, because what, the approach they've taken to enrollment projections is, there has certainly been a number of examples of districts over the last 15 years in the Commonwealth that have overbuilt. And the MSBA, as they studied that history, wanted to make certain that they had, that they had as accurate as possible an approach to enrollment projections. So they looked at all the past approaches to enrollment projections and actually assembled their own formula, and they do the enrollment projections. The town doesn't get to decide those, so all those were done by MSBA. And they believe that it's a very solid approach to establishing your enrollment, because they look at all the births, and they look at the attrition that has happened over the last 10 years. And so they take students who are here in town, and from ages 1 forward, and move those through the system over the next, you know, 10 years. And it gives them a pretty accurate system for doing those projections. But just in case there's a significant change, they want to make certain that any building design is capable of being expanded in the future if that happens. So that's their approach to it.
Thank you.
Scott, there is a factor built into that, recognizing what Mr. Deon had identified.
Rich, just for the people that are viewing at home, if you might use the microphone, please.
In addition to the enrollment projections, there is a factor built into those enrollment projections, recognizing that there may in fact be a return of students. And it's certainly a small percentage, but they do include that in the enrollment projections as well, to recognize the fact that you had pointed out.
Okay, Andy?
Scott, could you just explain the process, if both boards approve this tonight, what the next step is that the MSBA will follow, how often they accept what we propose versus sending it back to us, and what kind of collaboration goes on between the town and the MSBA?
Sure. The, the MSBA wants to know clearly which option the town would prefer to proceed with. Sometimes, the options are more close together, and that decision is more difficult. And so, they want to hear kind of what the town's position is. In this case, because the options are somewhat, you know, the difference is somewhat significant in terms of cost, they still want to know what direction the town wants to go in. But they're going to take all the information, they're going to go through all the cost data as well with their own independent specialists, they have in-house, they have independent specialists on cost analysis. They're going to compare it to projects that are similar to yours in terms of the projections and the estimates that have been made on cost. They're going to come, they're going to look at the educational advantages and disadvantages, and their staff will spend somewhere between two weeks and a month looking at all of this information. Sometime during that period, we're likely to get a preliminary report from them, either stating their position on certain pieces of the submittal, or asking for more information related to certain pieces of the submittal. And then, subsequent to that time period, we'll get a final report from them, where they'll indicate whether they are satisfied with all of the information, and they'll indicate which direction they feel like the town should go in. So, there is the possibility that they would recommend a different direction, although in your case, I'd say it's highly unlikely. But there's a strong possibility they may want some additional information in some areas. Sometimes, it's related purely to the town's financial status. Sometimes, it's related specifically to the options that are being proposed. But we should know within about a month of submitting this where the MSBA stands, and they'll provide that in a report.
And once that's provided to us, is that when Step 3 actually will proceed?
Yeah, we'll, in order to maintain momentum, we'll stop, or we'll start some of the discussions and planning associated with Step 3. Nothing that takes us in a direction that might potentially be derailed by MSBA. But there'll be ongoing activity over the next month. But certainly after their decision comes, there'll be, you know, six or seven months of intensive planning and design. And it's also a period of time that we've reported to the Building Committee, where it's time to go out to the public and to the community at large, because a decision will have been made on what the project is going to be in terms of an option. And it's a great time to solicit the community's input on designing that option. And in the prior steps, when you're discussing, as, for example, in Step 1, 16 options, or in this step where you're discussing four options, if you go out to the community, it can sometimes be very confusing. They might invest a ton of time talking about Option 2B, and then find out 2B is never even going to happen. So, Step 3 is a fun time, because it is time to go out to the community and start to talk about playfields, and parking, and the building, and community use, and the auditorium, the gymnasium, and what all those things should be, and make sure that we, there are a lot of users ultimately of this kind of community facility. We want to reach out to all of them in getting input during this Step 3. So there'll be a lot of public meetings, not just Building Committee meetings, which are always public, where everybody's always welcome, but specifically meetings to try to pull in user groups from the public, and talk specifically about their issues and their wants and their needs, and try to make it the best design it can be based on that input.
Great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions also. Now, tonight, it says our, is approval of the Abington School Building Committee's recommendations for the preferred option. Now, is that, does that mean that we're picking one of these four, or are the preferred options all of them?
One of these four, to move forward with, will be, will be selected. I believe that the Building Committee's recommendation is going to be Option 1. But yeah, one option moving forward.
Option 1 is the only one that I see that actually involves the land behind the high school and with that steep slope? All the other options would be built on the higher level. Is it still going to be brought in? Is that the plan, or is it going to be dug down?
Yes. The assumption in the current Option 1 is that the, that back area would require some fill material in order to support Option 1. Now, Option 1 may ultimately be designed on a couple of different levels, where you don't have to do that, but we wanted to be as conservative as possible in this Step 2 regarding Option 1. However, I will say, even with Options 2A, 2B, and 2C, there's not enough area behind the building before it slopes down. So all of those options, where you see either the middle school or the high school added to the back of the existing high school building, there's a significant amount of fill associated with those options as well.
And this is a stupid question, I think I know the answer, but the cost for the fill is factored into the estimate?
It is. It is. It isn't. And the phasing, the timeline, retaining walls, we have to talk through all those very detailed pieces of each one of these options. And you would see them in that detailed 100-plus page cost estimate. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette, do you, any members have questions?
I don't have any questions.
Talked about it at great length, I think.
I just have one, as far as the square footage, there's a difference about like 13,000 square feet. Where do we pick up the efficiencies as far as the construction of renovating and new versus just going all new?
The, the majority of the, and the point is, the question is, sort of, the new construction option, option one, is a smaller building than any of the renovation addition options by, I believe, yes, your number 13,000 square feet plus or minus. The reason for that is primarily in hallways, corridors, and ramping areas, believe it or not, associated with renovation and expansion because the circulation in general, and I'm talking people circulation, hallways, corridors, ramps, elevators, is significantly less efficient in the renovation addition options than it is in the new construction option. The other inefficiency in the renovation addition options, it's, let's say we had a program area, let's say it was an art room that was 1,200 square feet, and we knew that 1,200 square feet was the right amount of space to operate the program and have plenty of, you know, space available, students, equipment, et cetera. But in the existing building, there was a space that was 1,500 square feet. So it was larger. It was too large. We wouldn't necessarily propose demolishing all the walls and reconfiguring that over 300 square feet because that wouldn't be cost effective. But it may ultimately result in the building being slightly larger than a new building. And if a space was, in the existing high school, was too small, we wouldn't keep that space that was too small because the MSBA would say, no, we've got guidelines and regulations and the last thing we want you to do is $100 million project and have a lot of spaces in the building that are too small. So it's likely that in the renovation and expansion, you end up erring on the side of too big for a lot of those spaces. And that's where a lot of the inefficiency comes in. So it comes in in those two areas, kind of hallways, corridors, and wasted circulation in the renovation and expansion options. And then a lot of spaces that may have been just not as efficient as they could have been in the existing high school or the renovation and expansion option.
And I just have one other. Is, when you get into the, the design phase, are there certain parameters that the MSBA puts on you as far as what you can design and build? You know, because there's, you know, people out there saying, oh, I love what Whitman Hansen did. I love what East Bridgewater did. And not that we, you know, you, they want you to go to the Walmart format of you come in and you build four walls and you put it up. But are there certain parameters that you and the design team have to work within when you deal with the MSBA in this project?
There are. There are parameters on the size of the building. There are parameters on the cost of the building. And then there are parameters on the cost associated with developing the site. And those three things collectively act to control, if you will, what's built and, and what's constructed. The, the cost parameters are tied to how much you can spend on a dollars per square foot basis. In other words, the MSBA's database is constantly being adjusted. But they would suggest that for somewhere around $300 per square foot plus or minus, you can construct a facility that is of the ideal quality, that it will allow it to last for 50-plus years. And then they will tell you based on the number of pupils, how large that building can be. Now, they recognize that there are some spaces like the auditorium and perhaps even the gymnasium and some of those other community use spaces that you might want to build that would be slightly higher than their guidelines. And they will allow you to build more in those areas with the understanding that their reimbursement level may change for those particular pieces of the project. But all that becomes part of ultimately your negotiation for a high reimbursement rate with the project. But they do, they do have a number of parameters and they will continue to control all of those factors to make sure that they're also comfortable with the project that's being built here and that it represents, you know, good value, good quality, an outstanding educational environment, but ultimately at the, at the right cost.
Just, you have a question?
I don't know if you can answer this, Scott, but I did ask Rick LaFond by email if he could just give us an estimate as to what the cost would be based on option one to the average taxpayer. Rick, could you just give us that figure? Only because we had been working with a figure on a different estimate. And I think the general public would probably want to know as to what.
I think most of you will find in front of you spreadsheet.
Thank you. If I adopt your corner over here. And I'm looking at a piece of paper that would have printed on both sides. There's both a 25-year projection, if it's a 25-year bond versus a 30-year bond. And the treasurer collector, Leo Provost, who already had a nice template set up for this, had projected the average cost based upon various property valuations. If you look at, and I'll use $300,000 as an example, $300,000 property value, the average increase on a 25-year level principal bond would be about $623 per year. If that were a 30-year note, that number would be about $570 per year. That would be an increase in taxes. So. And just as a cautionary tale, this does not, this is only as a standalone project. This does not have any, this does not take into effect the declining debt that's already out there that's an excluded debt. So, so that's a different issue. That's a different analysis for another day, I suspect. So, but I don't want anyone to think that, that this has any impact on those. In fact, those will have positive impacts on this eventually. Is that enough, Mr. Burbine?
Yes, the general public would probably be curious as to about that number. Thank you.
If I might, just for the viewing public, among the questions I hear the most is why grades five through 12. I know we've gone over that in your first presentation, but if you just might touch base with that briefly, what the rationale was.
Sure. One of the, there, there ultimately were many rationales for the grades five through 12. And, and I think it evolves out of the MSBA recognizing that you have overcrowding issues across several grade levels. And the opportunity might exist here in the town to solve all of those problems with a single building project. Now, interestingly enough, if you were, if you were to decide to build a middle school and a high school on two completely separate parcels, that in the MSBA's eyes is two different projects. And you would only be able to complete one of those projects now. You'd have to choose which one. And then you would likely be years out before they would consider you for another project and a second project. But they have recently, just in the last five years, accepted the fact that if you would co-locate those two schools in order, in other words, locate them on the same property and allow them to be co-joined in some fashion, separate, but somehow joined, perhaps sharing common facilities like an auditorium, then they consider it as one single project. And the reason they began this concept of co-location is because they saw in towns like East Bridgewater, Duxbury, there's, there are a number of them that have adopted this approach, they could solve the town's problems, you know, for many years to come with a single project under a single bid, very economically. And they also realized, not initially, but after they looked at it further, that there were real educational opportunities, particularly in small towns, to co-locate the middle school and the high school where key facilities like video production studios, performance auditoriums, gymnasium space could benefit both the high school and the middle school without ever having to mix the two populations. So the idea that the middle school students would have access to advanced placement classes or advanced opportunities in performance or better physical education space really became attractive to a lot of these districts. So it's a combination of it being a very financially efficient project in the MSBA's eyes, solving all of your problems across all grade levels in their eyes. I mean, bringing the fifth grade up into that mix frees up some space in the elementary school. So you resolve overcrowding issues in the elementary schools, which based on our step one analysis were significant. You create a new environment where at five through eight, they've got their own school, even though they're co-located on the same side as the high school. And all of a sudden, students in grades five and six have the opportunity to share some of the same educational experiences as seventh and eighth graders, which is one of the things that's identified as clearly being lacking in the current seven, eight educational approach, which is very rare and not often used anymore. But it was utilized here in Abington because it was the most efficient way to occupy the current middle school. And so all of those things, the ability to combine five through eight and get those educational advantages, the ability to build a new high school, the ability to co-locate, have a single project funded, was the reason MSBA said, you know, after step one, don't even think about a five, eight middle school. We just see it's so obvious that your best investment is to address all your grade levels in a single project with a five, 12 co-located school. And, and the, you know, as Chairman Tessa would tell you, as they are going around to the community and talking about this project, a lot of the questions are, you know, are we sure about the co-location of middle school and high school students? I think a lot of those questions will be answered in detail when we start step three. And we can clearly demonstrate to people what the meaning, physically, what does that look like? And what is the meaning of that co-location? And how do those students remain separated? How do they arrive and depart separately? But at the same time, share some really important educational facilities.
As a final point of clarification regarding the middle school project, if we determine that we felt the town was smarter than the MSBA and we said, no, we feel that a middle school is truly the best solution for the, to meet the town's school building needs, the MSBA would say, well, that's great, but we're not going to participate with you. So if you guys choose to go that direction, you're building that on your own. So the only option that the MSBA will in fact participate on us with is one of the two co-located facilities.
Thank you.
Can I just add something to what they've said? Because I think your question had more to do with why five through eight is opposed seven and eight. And I've been involved in middle-level education for a very long time. And the actual definition for middle level is five through eight. Most schools, how is their middle school based on how many grades they can fit in a building? But they should be educating their students with a middle school philosophy which meets those students five through eight. This would give us an opportunity to actually have a good middle-level education. And often in many schools that are five through eight, the five and sixth graders, their program is a little bit different from your seventh and eighth. And they're a little bit separated, but you're still looking at that middle school model. And five through eight is considered middle level.
Questions from the audience? Got to be one question. Okay, just to reiterate again for the viewing public, this is just another step in the process. We're going to get to step, phase three, which is going to be more involved with the community. Before this goes anywhere, it has to go to town meeting. If town meeting accepts this vote, it has to go to the ballot. So everybody will have an opportunity to have their questions heard. Everybody will have an opportunity to vote at town meeting and at the ballot box. So just not to think that, you know, it's a small group trying to push something around here. It's a very open process. The, the school building committees or the, the school committees, they're all open public meetings. If you have questions, you can call the school department and, you know, we'll go from there. So is there no other questions?
Rich, maybe you want to give the website for the committee? Just, because there's a lot of information on there for people who want.
Absolutely. We publish both the agendas in advance and all the minutes. Also, all of the presentations you've seen thus far are available on the website as well. The website is www.asbc.us, Abington School Building Committee dot U S. So again, you can get all the information that has been disseminated thus far, including the original thousand-page report at the completion of step one is also available out there as well.
Thank you. Okay, there's no further question. I'd accept a motion to approve and endorse the school building committee's recommendation to identify option one, new construction of grades five through 12, co-located middle school and high school as the preferred solution to the feasibility study-related materials. Second?
Chairman Franny, I'd just like to point out, the MSBA does require a roll call vote.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Anything further?
I just asked one question. Was, was it unanimous vote?
It was not a unanimous, unanimous vote. It was 15 out of 16 voting members. One of the 16 members chose, preferred one of the option two solutions.
Okay, Tom? Tom, you have a question?
No, just ready to vote?
Andy?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
We have to endorse to approve and endorse the school building committee's recommendation to identify option one, new construction of grade five through 12, co-located middle school and high school as preferred solution in the feasible, feasibility study-related materials.
Yes.
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 Okay. And the second part of that would be to approve and authorize the owner's project manager to submit the feasibility study-related materials to the MSBA for its consideration. Motion by Mr. Burbine?
Second.
Second by Mr. Coyle. Anything further? If not, Tom?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
We also would look to approve and authorize the owner's project manager to submit feasibility study-related materials to the MSBA for its consideration.
I'm going to make that motion.
Second, roll call?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is vote to approve Mr. Drew, Mr. Dave Drew, to the Abington School Bit, School Building Committee, provided he stands up here and recites the Gettysburg Address.
Chairman Franny, I would like to point out, Mr. Drew has been a very active participant in the process throughout. He also brings with him a number of years' experience from the facility management background, working with the court systems. So we do feel that Mr. Drew would be a welcomed addition to the committee. And we would request that you respectfully approve his addition.
Thank you. Having heard.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Deion, second by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion?
So a question, is the number of members unlimited?
It's not limited. It will change the number requiring for a quorum, but it's not limited to a set number.
Okay. If no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. I don't know that you people have to vote on that.
We don't have to do it.
Yeah. Okay. And the last item on the agenda is a request for vote to designate a member of the school building committee as a special minister employee. I've asked to have that put on hold as we are in the process of.
They already have special.
Yeah, they have now. So it just, we are in the process of looking at policy over again.
Thank you.
And we'll bring it up later if it's, if needed.
If appropriate. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burbine, second by Mr. Deion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
We have to vote.
Oh, you have to vote. Sorry.
Motion. Second by your...